I would want to support that. So what is the difference? And you can't make a decision based upon this data because there hasn't been any study done of the other libraries. Just these, just these numbers that are two years old without any explanation of what those numbers mean. And that isn't what I thought we had asked to be done six months ago.
Mr. Mayor. I've spoken to the city manager about the difference between report and my expectations of report, but there are a couple, couple comments I'd like to make. There was, there was some new information, there was one new item that I hadn't realized in that the overhead is allocated by the JPA to the member agencies. They talked about giving equal weighting to usage, to circulation and welcome traffic, also to property tax revenue, and population and service area. And so I've had to again raise more questions and I didn't get the answers. And that usage, I can see certainly the logic, allocating certain expenses, certain overhead expenses based upon that and what the city's percent of the usage is total. Property tax bothers me though, in terms of fact that I think that Atherton's property tax has risen at a steeper rate than probably most of the other agencies because of the amount of activity that's going on in the town. But I don't have the numbers, I can't prove it, just a feeling. If that's the case, then that, that leg would say that Atherton would be taking on a larger percentage of the overall overhead over some period of time. And as far as the population of the service area, I assume that includes the 9,000 plus that live in unincorporated areas, which means the county doesn't have that number in their, in their part of the formula, which means to me that Atherton is providing some subsidy there to the county. But those are just questions, I can't state them as facts, but they're, they're questions are raised. The other interesting thing, I think, in talking with the, with the city manager who had talked with the JPA is that as long as Atherton maintained control over whatever the activity was, that the town could, could look at things you could do for the schools, but it has to maintain control. And that, that's something I think that we're exploring in more detail over time as to, and I'm thinking in terms of when the new libraries built, I assume we'll still be getting donor funds. And there should be some sort of mechanism, some sort of an organization advisory group or something set up to help guide the council in terms of possible projects that we might want to propose to the JPA will be considered along these lines.
I did some research on, on this as well, maybe I can answer a couple of questions. But I do have a question also for Ann Marie, but one is, is I did take the time, I, because I, I thought that we were also going to get some additional information, like, you know, this is the benefits, you know, you're in the JPA, these are the benefits, here's the cost associated with not being in the JPA, this is the cost associated with being in the JPA. So one of the big questions we all have, I think, and everybody has, is what's the cost? What does somebody like Menlo Park pay to be able to have somebody go in with their car from Atherton and check a book out there? Or order a book here at our Atherton library and say send it over here? So I spent some time with Susan, actually considerable amount of time with Susan over at the Menlo Park Library. And actually, of course, they've got two branches, they're 150,000 books is what they have, or 180,000 books. They, they spend $150,000 in buying new books a year, that's what their budget from, from the town. They went through and they said, and here's the fee that they pay for the JPA, which is a two-part fee, which is $113,000 per year. It's a backwards looking, it's an annual year's paying annual, and here's based on the traffic of the, of the library itself, because a lot of the costs is associated with carrying books back and forth. So as you check out a book, say from Menlo Park, you know, Menlo Park actually owns those books, audiobooks are owned by the county, Menlo Park owns the books, their books go back and forth, and there's a fee that's paid for moving books back and forth, because then they go to all these places to fix this thing up. Also, there's about $11,000 fee per annum that pays for the, when you check a book out, there's standard checkout systems, because all this stuff is tied into a computer network that's also part of this fee. And, and there's a maintenance cost associated with that, because there's a centralized purchasing policy that pays and buys all these pieces of equipment so that they're standard across the county and also at the community colleges. And there's, and of course, then there's a maintenance contract for somebody to maintain that, so that's another 10 to 11,000. So last year, well, the activities that they had last year, the costs associated with last year, their fee this year is 120, roughly $125,000 is what they pay for, and Menlo Park pays for being part of the system. And then on top of that, they have, of course, a bond measure that pays for their bricks and mortar, they also have then their operating fees that come out of their general fund that pays for the people that are involved. So I thought that that was an interesting fee. And so, you know, I didn't find that information in this report. City manager and I discussed it today, but, but I wanted to make sure that we all had that. When I was going through the documentation though, in pursuit of your conversation, Jerry, I looked at the balance sheet, and I do have, this is really where my question is, is on the balance sheet, which is on page 51 of 121, there is the budget, recommended budget view, there's an item 6263, and I did call Pam, the finance director, I didn't get ahold of her yesterday, but Ann Marie did return my call, but I didn't have time because of the other things, I was preparing for this meeting, and I appreciate you calling back. But there's this item that says, Redwood City, daily city contributions. And in my, in my research, it looks like that that's a fee that the library system is paying for, because these are two big draw libraries that actually take people from the unincorporated areas, for example, San Mateo, or in the case of Daily Cities, because Hillsborough doesn't have their, a library, they're, they get a fee. Is that, is that the correct assumption that this is to cover for those activities?
So I was, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
The Daily City and Redwood City agreements were agreements that were in place before the JPA was born.
Okay.
And those stayed in place because the unincorporated areas in those two cities, they're near those libraries.
Okay.
So it, it, I assume at the time, it made sense to keep those in place, they've been in place for many years.
Okay.
So Redwood City has their fairups.
Right.
They directly serve the North Fairups community. Hillsborough actually has a contract with both Burlingame and San Mateo City, City Libraries, to serve their residents. And then we do a contract with Daily City to serve the unincorporated areas of Coleman and Park.
Okay, alright. So not to make you find a point on it, I, I thought that that was the case, and I appreciate the clear, clear and concise answer, because, but one of the things that tramples me is that while there's a fee that's part of our dollars going towards the government for part of that, that same area that Redwood City is getting paid for was included in the, in the service area that we were asked to size a library for that covered this. So that's kind of like double counting.
I'd have to check that, I believe it was, we did include North Fairups, it included some unincorporated areas that did not include North Fairups.
Mr. Mayor, it's my understanding that the, the funds for that particular transaction come out of the, the library taxes that are collected from unincorporated area residents?
It comes out of system funds, that's correct. I also wanted to mention something about the Menlo Park, please. I think what you're, the conversation you had with Susan, Holmheart, Menlo Park, that those are fees that Menlo Park pays to the Peninsula Library System.
Correct, correct.
Which San Mateo County libraries are part of as well.
Right.
And so the system pays a fee, and I believe we pay $750,000 for all...
Although I thought it was a great deal, I'm not saying that.
Oh, I just, I just wanted to, there's a little bit of confusion, because there are a couple different layers, there's the JPA, then there's the Peninsula Library System.
Okay, no, and I appreciate you making that clear, I just, that kind of allows us, because there's lots of different pieces of information in here, and we're all trying to piece something together. Since I did a little extra research, like, you know, I know everybody does, and so I just wanted to, that's what I've gotten out of it, because that was, that was my, because I couldn't find in your revenue stream where it was and where everybody else was paying, I couldn't find it in here.
Yeah.
Why is Menlo Park, you know, there's seven jurisdictions that are not part of the JPA, but they're getting services, you know, from the Peninsula Library System, so we need to try to understand that.
Right, the JPA system.
So, so that was, that was interesting. I could have, can you explain this group four, or I guess, like, there was a, there was a reference to, to, in your strategy section. And you talk about like, I think here it is, goal four. I didn't see goal one, two, or three, I just see goal four, so I assume that's, you know, a special name.
The goal, attachment C.
Attachment C?
Uh, yeah, and so I didn't really understand what that was, and so, yeah, I wasn't really sure what that was, and so...
Page two.
All of the goals are actually in the, starting on page 80.
Attachment C, yes, in PAP?
Yeah, it's, it's, I can show it right here.
I thought that was investment.
It's, 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 see, this thing is, it's the JPA governing board, it's a letter from you dated October 26th, investment report as of September 30th, 2012.
Okay.
Second page, says strategic plan alignment, starts out with goal four.
Oh.
Well, I must have had a truncated version, because I missed...
Okay. We, in all of our staff reports to the governing board, we link it back to our strategic plans, so that all of the, all of the issues and agenda items, they link back and they have alignment with our overall strategic plan.
Okay.
And the full set of goals, you have that in here as well.
Well, sorry, the page, page 80 is where they start.
Yeah, there is a goal, so you can...
Oh, yeah, I see. Yeah, okay. My other comments were, I think, the other two, Councilmember McKee then brought up, but, you know, I was looking really at the apples and oranges and the differences in the sizes of the libraries and, and the costs associated with those, because of course our number was a big number compared to some of the other numbers. But, but of course, you know, devil's in detail.
Yeah, and if you look at the, at the range I submitted, I mean, you don't, we wouldn't ever attribute the cost per capita to a work system, or a district, we're charged with serving the entire population, so we don't call it out, because there are support services and overhead services. Even the FTE, the staff FTE, that is the staff that's assigned to Atherton, it's not My Time, Agcon, HR, IT, so it's, it's very, it's hard to make comparisons in this space and in many cases, because you don't know, you know, how they're figuring out the cost.
Well, well, a big disparity was, and I, and again, you know, the timing, because I thought that they'd opened up a new library down in Mosquitos.
They have, so that, this is all data.
Yeah, and when I looked at it, and our numbers were substantially higher, and I think a brand new Lincoln Library, they're paying this, and you go over to ours, and you say, why are we paying so much? It must be the insurance, because it's a size and a clearly unsafe building.
Don't you think that if you'd added the additional 8,000, you know, to make it the 13, 16,000 person demographics at, per capita?
Sure, if you increase the service area, it comes to 70,000.
If you increase the service area, our per capita, I don't know, amount would have gone down.
It comes to 70,000.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and the total system is 65,000. Sixty-five per person, I mean, and that's...
Being the second highest in the land, a little shocking. So can I ask a question about the financial, the financial statement, the adopted budget? It's on page 11, 121, page 11. Could you just walk this through then, and maybe just kind of explain where your item 333, the fund balance, comes from and you trans...
I'm sorry, I don't have the page.
It's, it says 2012, 13, adopted budget.
Yours did, oh, because you printed yours out.
Well, no, because our number are Georgia, we're all packing.
So the sources, should we show them? There's the whole budget document in here as well, that provides a lot of detail, but that's primarily property taxes, use of money, you know, this is all different revenue, intergovernmental revenues, charges for services.
And so the total revenue is 18 million, and then you've got a fund balance of 13 million.
Correct.
And then a total of 31 million.
Correct.
And then the gross appropriations comes down to 27 million, and so you have to have an interest and transfer from your fund balance.
Right, and that's the overhead costs that we're talking about. So we use a formula that was decided by the JPA went forward, and that Councilmember Carlson was talking about that earlier.
And so that fund, that fund balance is not being eaten out, it's not like your reserves?
No.
Yeah.
No, it's basically...
From the difference. Yeah, okay.
Could I ask you, Paul, one question?
Sure.
With your permission, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Ann Marie, nice to, nice to see you again. Would it be possible for Atherton to, or let me ask a question this way. When you receive property tax revenues, you, you put them in different buckets with the different agencies, is that correct?
Yeah.
Then how do you keep track of what the property taxes for Atherton are, plus the expenses and so forth, unless you have something like subsidiary ledger or something like that, to keep track of them?
We, so it's, you know, I'll walk you through, it's a system budget.
Sorry.
And the revenues are, you know, the, the way that we provide services is based in the JPA agreement about minimum service hours, so we set a budget based on that and the other...
Yeah, I understand how you do the overall budget, but I'm, what I'm, what I'm interested in is the piece that Atherton, I mean, some, some of those property tax dollars are from Atherton properties, and you must have some separate accounting for the property tax dollars of each agency somewhere.
That's a calculation, isn't it?
A calculation, you mean, you don't get an actual amount from the, the county as to what Atherton contributed?
It doesn't come from individual, it doesn't come from individual cities, is my understanding.
I don't understand how you calculate the donor funds then.
Yeah.
Well, do, well, do you get, do you get it from the, from the county assessors, they just give you a bulk dollar figure, is that what you're saying?
I believe so, but why don't I double check?
Yeah, because I think it...
I mean, I think it is a calculation, and we provide, you know, based on our estimated cost of services.
Yeah, I, I understand all, I understand all that. The, the bottom line at the end of the year is that you say, okay, Atherton, you have so much more in donor funds, this year maybe 800, 900,000, I understand. So there must be some starting figure as far as what the revenue is, that, and there's a list of things that get subtracted from that, that the county subtracts from that. So there must be some sort of separate agency accounting in order for you to come up with Woodside, Patilla Valley, and Atherton having donor funds of so much.
Well, we project revenue, but it's not based on individual...
Well, there must be, there must be some, some accounting that takes place there, or you couldn't come up with a donor fund. And what I would like to see, if it could all be sorted out, is, okay, here's the amount of property tax dollars that came from the town of Atherton. Now, here are the items that basically got charged against that, the Atherton property tax dollars, and this is the residual, the donor fund amount that we're going to transfer to, to Atherton. But you're telling me that that doesn't exist, that kind of detail doesn't exist, is that correct?
Well, the overhead charges that we're talking about is based on the formula.
I understand that.
So, so we don't track like system costs and parse it out to each of the members?
I kind of feel that we're not, looking up here.
May I, may, Councilmember Carlson, may I add a follow-on to what you're saying? So if we just assume that our overall property tax valuation is 61 million, right?
Or take a third of our property tax.
Okay, 61 million, 3.2% of that is about 1,920,000.
3.2% of 1%.
3.2% of 100, yeah.
Well, 1, 1.
Right, right. Take that, take that 100 off, right. So, so that's about, it does come out to be a 1,900, something like 20,000 dollars. And so if you're saying that, so that's, I think, the, the formula that is, is used, because if you look at the amount of money that was spent in 2011, 2012, it was about a million 100,000, and the amount of donor city funds that were passed over, passed down was 969,000, according to this report. So that seems to calculate out that way.
So we, based on information the last time we reported, were estimated donor city funds. We do a preliminary accounting of San Mateo County Library property tax, and we attribute that to parcels located within the boundaries of the town of Atherton. There's also EWRAP that comes to the JPA, so that is, that revenue is figured as well, so that's the total revenue. And then we do an estimated operating cost, and that's how we figure out what the estimated donor city funds would be. At the end of the year, we figure out closing costs, and, you know, update this on the actual donor funds.
Would it be possible for town, some town staff, maybe the town finance manager, the city manager concurred, to sit down with your finance person and try to ascertain as to how the donor funds are calculated?
Sure.
Does, you know... A page is empty.
It's not included in your packet, but it's, I don't know, the last time we sent this to the town, we should do 15,000.
I, I, I would, I would think, this manager through our finance director, that one of the things that we're doing with this property tax audit, that we ought to add this to our list, that say that we'd like to make sure that when we're doing the property tax, that, 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 you know, I cannot believe that it's just a lump sum that's handed over and there's no insight. But I believe that there's got to be insight that goes to these jurisdictions. And I know that Mr. Stabby believes it, but I don't, I believe that it's more specific. And then I can understand, then you build, you build your operating budget, and then you develop your overhead, and then spread across to everybody, and then there's a formula of the way it's allocated out based on circulation and other, other attributes.
Correct.
So, but, but I think where, where the Councilmember Carlson was coming from is that, but you do have the initial budget, you know exactly how much we give, and I think that somebody up there does know.
Yeah.
We don't want to put you on the spot. And Robert and I, and Ann Marie and Pam, probably sit down, develop that box out. Yeah. Well, we're doing that, we're doing a property tax audit right now, so, you know, we're sending money up to the county, we don't get that much back, so...
We don't know what they do with that.
We're just trying, trying to understand how we get as much back as we think we should be making. Any other questions for the council?
I just want to say, Ann Marie, you're doing a great job.
Other questions from the public on the library, yes?
Do I get to go up there or should I talk to you either way?
No, we're recording, so you need to come up here.
Okay.
Yeah, but he gets on TV.
Roger Schwab for Bathurst County Attorney. And I just looked at this for the first time, so if I miss something, please correct me. As I looked through this, I noted that it rightly refers now back to the county library law of 1911, 1912, because I think earlier this summer, our attorney had put together, at the request of the council, an understanding of how this JPA stuff worked, and he had cited some education code and the government code. And subsequent to that, the attorney for the county library system disagreed with that and came up with a different thing going back to this 1912 stuff. Well, what I can see in here is interesting, I guess, but what I don't see is a conclusion that the county library's attorney made, which is that if we were to withdraw from the JPA, we would risk losing all the money in the donor city funds. And I was wondering if our, our attorney had done any research to agree or disagree with that conclusion, and if he hasn't done it, that's certainly something we need to look into before we proceed too much farther down the road with this.
Mr. Mayor, I can respond briefly. The last meeting, the council received a report, confidential report from the city attorney, and I think the public part of that would be that the, my original opinion was based on information given to me by the JPA. Turned out to be old information, and I agree with the current information provided by the JPA attorney about the source of the funds. I disagree, and please note that he was equivocal. He said, well, there could be an argument. I don't believe there's an argument about donor funds, because, two reasons. One, the JPA agreement itself sets out the donor funds. Secondly, the county librarian has agreed with, with my understanding, that these funds are in fact tied to the donor, the city that, where the taxes were created in the first place, or created in the first place. And that seems to follow pretty much constitutional law, having to do with taxation from various municipal jurisdictions. It gets fuzzy because of the fact that taxes, property taxes are, are collected by the county, based on state law, and then it's just like put into a washing machine, it starts going in different directions, and, and they distribute it, not us. But I do still believe that those donor funds, because of contractual elements in the, in the JPA agreement, they have to flow back to the, to the various donor cities.
Well, I can tell you what his conclusion was, he did give an opinion, and he did caution. He said, ultimately, while the matter is not entirely free of doubt, in my opinion, because the donor city funds are traceable to county-free library taxes dedicated to the support of the county library, accrued donor city funds will likely remain an asset under the control of the library JPA board, even after withdrawal of the member. So he did a pie, but he thinks it would stay with the JPA. So I mean, there's enough fuzz here that we better be sure what we know what we're doing before we start thinking about withdrawing.
Unfortunately, most of what I deal in is gray, not dyed white. There is no answer to this until some, or unless somebody wants to go to the Superior Court and have a judge, after a lengthy trial, determine where these tax funds should flow out. I don't, I haven't been tasked with that job yet, and I think the only thing we've, we're at the information gathering and discussion stage, and that's why I say, I have my opinion, he has his opinion, and I'm going based on the county librarian's opinion as well. So, I mean, I'm pretty sure that that's what I read in a report from the county librarian, that these donor funds are traceable back to the jurisdiction... from the county librarian, that these donor funds are traceable back to the jurisdictions, and it's their money.
Well, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with either of you guys, I'm just saying we need to think about it, that's all I have, that's it.
But, but the purpose of, of this discussion is actually just, and I'm getting a better understanding of what the situation is.
Right.
We're not making any decisions, we're not being disposed, there's no action that we're taking, this is a meet and confer.
Right, so this is just me giving you some information that I'm aware of that you should be aware of.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Laura Sleet, you can tell the drive, Mr. Mayor, council people, um, I'm not going to offer any opinion on what was just done, but I am going to have you and your attorney, uh, I'll give you a site, I did read the restated JPA agreement, and maybe all of you did too, and in one, Roman one E, on page four of that agreement, it says, "The agency is not entitled to the return of any funds contributed to the library JPA. Party takes and obligations to provide library services to all residents." While I'm up here, and I don't want to come up again, I would like to say, since I believe this is Ms. McKeithen's last meeting, on behalf of most of the residents, I think she has done a remarkable job over her three terms here, she is one of, one of the people that I feel has the most integrity that I have seen over my years following the council, so I think on behalf of, there aren't too many people left, but you really deserve our vote of thanks, thank you very much.
Okay, any other public comments or questions? We recognize, uh, Councilmember McKeithen at the beginning of the meeting.
I'm sorry, yeah.
That's okay, I just wanted to get it, no, she didn't, it wasn't that she didn't get recognized, she even got a hammer.
I went with the cops, guys, before I came here.
That's good, you're civic to me. Okay, any other, no other public comments, opposed public comments, Matt? And any other comments from the council?
Just continue pursuing answers.
I think, I think actually, you know, this was a, a good start, and, you know, we had the, the previous discussion item that, uh, the city attorney alluded to, um, you know, obviously there's a lot of benefit for us being part of the JPA, and, and we certainly appreciate that, and the peninsula library system is a, a very valuable thing for all residents here in the town, so we got a little bit more insight into how things are, there's more questions that we'd like to get answered, but I think that getting something allows us to then get some better answers, uh, or hone down on what answers we want so we get better insight as to what's there, we can answer questions to the residents, so, um, there is no action to be taken, so thank, uh, thank you, Amber Reed, and, and George, and Kathy, and everyone, so, uh, let's move on. I guess we have, item twenty is the staff reports, and Councilmember Vice Mayor Lewis has put together her trip report to, on the number of things that include the legal city, and I still owe that, and I'll be getting that out shortly, and of course, uh, Councilmember Carlson, the editor of excellence, uh, for the, highlighting a lot of things in the rail side. Any other discussions, questions, trying to council members who've turned in a report? Item twenty-one is, uh, a colleague's memo that we've all read, and I guess the action here is to take a vote on agreeing or not agreeing to put it on a future council meeting. So do we have a motion to look at that?
Also move.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, no problem.
Mr. Mayor, um, I wanted to raise one other possible item that, uh, for the December agenda, and that has to do with the, um, South Bay waste management, uh, fees, um, my thought was that it might be good to show the residents the projections that were put together a year or so ago and how they turned out, and I think also it'd be worthwhile discussing of the households that have, uh, quite a number of extra green buckets that are being subsidized by four or five dollars a bucket concurrently, and, uh, I think there was, um.
There was some, they have up to twenty of such barrels.
But I, I, I think, I would suggest that some probably given, I don't know, maybe you can.
Uh, George brought it up to me, uh, when he and I had a conversation today, and, um, I think that it'd be worthwhile for you and I and George to get together, and I did ask that, uh, that we hear from Kathleen and get her final report so that we can certify the, the rates that we're being charged, it's not necessarily where the rates are today and what we may or may not have to do with our rates, but also we want to make sure that what we're being charged is right, and if they're saying that we have a decreased, you know, or, or stay the same, well, maybe we, we're substantial, we have a substantial surplus, we should find that out, because this says, this rate actually sets the tone for moving forward, so, so, yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent.
There, but there's one more thing that, uh, I would probably like to bring up in that discussion, that'd be the, uh, whether or not to designate the use of the franchise fees the town receives from the, uh, from, recall it, for a specific use, right now it just goes into general fund.
Yeah, I was, uh, originally anticipated to be, like, a road impact, right, huh? Okay. So we have a subcommittee meeting, we have a subcommittee meeting, we need to get with Kathleen and get the final report, we have to have a subcommittee meeting.
Kathleen was, uh, going to email Robert her final information and notes, and then you will have to the subcommittee.
And then give us that time to prepare something for the council, for, so, like, something at that tomorrow. Monday off. Final public comments?
I think we should.
Can you have one more?
Before, before we adjourn to the closing session, I just want to acknowledge, uh, Mr. Conlon, um, left, but, you know, we have Denise, and, um, you know, uh, thank you for being here tonight, and, um, running a good campaign, and then our new council member, Barry Reese, is in the audience, and Greg was here also, so, I, I think that we've got lots of good community involvement, and we look forward to having Perry join us next month, thank you so much for being here.
Okay, thank you. Uh, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Some motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.